All right, it's 7:01. I'm going to call the meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order. Our first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance, and I'm going to call on Selectman Muska, because she's the first one who muted herself.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Sarah. All members of the Board are present. Our next item of business is approval of the minutes from our April 1st, 2021 regular meeting. As I said, we haven't had a chance to review those.
Selectman Muska will move to approve the Board of Selectmen regular meeting minutes from April 1st, 2021.
Is there a second?
We'll read this, so we'll second that.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion or corrections? Once again, Peg did a very good job. These are not inconsiderable. If there are no discussions or corrections, Selectman Nordele.
Aye.
Selectman Baker.
Aye.
Selectman D'Souza.
Aye.
Selectman Muska.
Aye.
Minutes are adopted.
Jason, were you ever to check to see if Bob Slate was the enforcement officer, hearing officer?
I was, and he is.
Okay, thank you.
We're now onto public participation. This is one of several opportunities for the public to address the Board. Are there any members of the public who would like to address the Board of Selectmen? Please say your name and your address. Seeing none. There are two pieces of communication in your packet. The first is... Whoa, looks like there's only one piece of communication in your packet. Did others have the budget message in theirs?
No.
Okay, I'll start that and get that out next time. So the item number 6B is a letter that was sent to Governor Lamont that I drafted and was co-signed by leaders of East Hartford, South Windsor, Windsor Locks, Ellington, and South Windsor again, and copied to all of our state legislators about the impact that the sports betting deal has on the town of East Windsor by encumbering the site that was formerly designated to host the casino. So I wanted you all to have a copy of that. We do have one resignation. Kathy Simonelli has submitted her resignation from the CIP Committee. Of note, the reason that her resignation from the Board of Education is not listed there is because she doesn't actually resign to us. That goes through a different process, so she's listed as resigning from CIP, because that's a board-appointed position.
Selectman Muska will move to approve the resignation of, with regret, of Kathy Simonelli from the Capital Improvement Planning Committee.
Selectman Nordele will second that.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion?
Selectman Muska, I'd just like to thank Kathy for her numerous years of dedication in volunteering and giving back to the community. She will be missed.
Selectman Nordele would also echo that. She, being Chair of the Board of Education, is a lot of work. It's a lot of time spent. Not that CIP isn't, but she will be missed in town, and so will her services.
I think everybody shares those sentiments.
I would echo that for sure. I think the amount of work that she puts into the positions that she volunteered on was impressive. She was very organized, very smart, and I think she did a really great job, so it'd be a big hole to fill.
Would agree with everyone.
All those in favor of accepting the resignation, Selectman Nordele.
Aye.
Selectman Baker.
Aye.
Selectman D'Souza.
Aye.
Selectman Muska.
Aye.
South Road Ownership Update. So I wanted to, it's been a while since we talked about this. I wanted to let folks know where things stood. We're still trying to get the language incorporated, the necessary language incorporated into the real estate conveyance bill that the legislature passes that will allow the low-income restriction on that property to be lifted. We're not sure yet if it will be included. At the request of the General Assembly, Pullman and Conley is working on a title search to get the true history of the property. So we're going to turn that over to them as soon as that's completed. The conveyance process is a little bit different this year, so even though the legislative raised bill deadlines have come and gone, the language for the conveyance bill isn't yet final. So it's important that we get that turned over to them as quickly as possible so that they can consider lifting that low-income restriction. In the meantime, the WPCA has entertained a request from the town engineer so that we can make sure that we know what needs to be done in terms of infrastructure, in terms of infrastructure repairs, to turn that over from private property to the WPCA. That process has, those conversations have started, and I believe the necessary work, repair work on the subsurface sewer has been staked out, and DPW is working on moving that forward. So there is some progress. Still left to be resolved is what we're going to do from a zoning component, which is a rather complicated puzzle. But, you know, one way or another, whether the legislature lifts the low-income restriction or not, we need to push forward on that. So I wanted you guys to know that there was still some progress happening there. Any questions or comments on that?
Jason, just for clarification, Selectman Nordele here. So if they don't lift that title, that low-income title on those properties, how does that affect the residents and their purchase?
Well, that's not a requirement in order to move the conveyance, the local conveyance forward. The Bond Commission did what they needed to do to allow us to convey it. So it's just a question of whether or not that low and moderate income restriction is left in place, which comes with, you know, some consideration required for the potential property owners. They'll need to decide whether they want to take ownership of the underlying property with that restriction in place or not. Without an act of the legislature, it's staying. And so I remain optimistic that they will consider that, especially considering that we're nearly 50%, over our low-income target as established by 830G. So the long answer to your short question, Charlie, is if that's left in place, the residents are going to have a decision to make. But I think we still, you know, would want to present them with an opportunity for us to dispossess the property.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I just, because I know that there's talk of zoning changes and making requirements for towns as far as holding a certain amount of low-income housing for each town and stuff like that, and I just questioned how it would affect residents and the town as a whole.
To clarify that, there is a requirement for low-income housing already in place, and that's in CGS 830G. That requires 10% of the town's housing stock to be at the "affordable" level, which is defined as 75% of the median market value of the properties in each town. So low and moderate income housing in Putnam is a very different number than that number is in Greenwich. So regardless, the town of East Windsor, according to the most recent statistics put out by DOH, is at 14.9, I think 14.9% of our housing stock is considered low to moderate income, and that's almost entirely driven by Mill Pond Village. That's 10% right there, and then there's another 4.5% throughout the community. But that statutory requirement isn't a consideration or a hurdle that the town needs to get over because we are so far beyond it already. Other towns actually struggle with that, and there are heated debates and conversations about planned developments with consideration for 830G that thankfully were spared from because we're already surpassing that state goal.
Right. Yep.
Corey?
Yeah, Jason, on the proposal that was submitted by Green Mountain, is that responsive? You don't have that?
Green Mountain?
Yeah, Green Mountain Pop Line Services, sure rehabilitation on South Road. Looks like that?
I don't think I have that.
Yeah, we do, Jay.
Hold on a second. Let me pull it up, just give me two seconds.
Jay, that wasn't online. That was in our package from the Recording Secretary.
Hang on. Oh, it's Len's memo. Yeah, okay, go ahead and ask your question.
Yeah, whose responsibility is that payment? Is that the town's or is that the water pollution control?
No, that's the town's.
That is the town.
And it's a requirement of the WPCA for the underlying sewer to be to their standard before they take control of it.
Okay, that's what I thought. I just wanted for clarification. Do you have any anticipated increase? Because this was only good for 60 days, and it was sent on January 27th, so the 60 days are up. Is it 5%, 10% increase? Do we know?
To my knowledge, there won't be an increase. It's just a vote for holding, but Len and Joe are on the line, and Len is the one who's been talking with them, so you can correct me if I'm misstating that.
Emran? Hi, it's Len here. I doubt there'll be an increase. If there is, it would be very minor. It really didn't increase that much in the two years when we got the previous quote from them, so we're not anticipating any great increase at this point.
Now, what are our finances, Jay? Do we have one yet?
I'm sorry, you cut out for a second there. Can you repeat that, please?
Yeah, what are our plans to finance this? Do we have it in place yet, or are we still working on it?
A large chunk of it's going to come from CNR line that's specifically intended for that project, and then Len and Joe will find the rest.
Okay, thank you.
If there's nothing else on that, so we have a town meeting at 7:30, so I'm going to start this. You know what? We have a town meeting at 7:30, so I'm going to get something that I know will be a shorter conversation out of the way. I'm going to ask that we postpone Agenda, or Table Agenda, Item 9A, and take up Agenda Item 9B, which is to discuss the POCD implementation with Clark and Ruth.
Selectman Nordele also moved.
Second, moved and seconded discussion. Selectman Nordele.
Aye.
Selectman Baker. Selectman Baker.
Aye.
Selectman D'Souza.
Aye.
Selectman Muska.
Aye.
Okay. Len and Joe, my apologies. I don't want to start something that may not be finished by the time the town meeting starts, so I'm going to just hold you guys. So Clark and Ruth, if you guys are with us, please feel free to chime in. As you guys, as you Board members will remember, we talked about POCD implementation at our last meeting. Ruth gave a good presentation on kind of the state of where things stood, and the converse, you guys had asked that we revisit whether or not there was a need to formally establish a POCD Implementation Committee. So I've talked with Clark. Clark and Ruth have had some conversations about this, and I'd invite them to share their insights or their opinion on what's been done in the past, what other communities have done, what would make sense for us to do.
So I guess I'll go first. I think generally, most communities just go ahead and more or less consider it as a working group of planning and zoning. I did talk to the chairman about, to see whether he had a preference, and I'm not so sure he was convinced that it should be a working group of planning and zoning because he views it more as a town-wide effort as the POCD was. And as, I don't know if you have a list of the potential nominees or volunteers, but it's, Ruth and I went around and solicited volunteers and hopefully didn't engage in volunteering people that they were serving. But Paul Anderson from WPCA volunteered. Alan Baker, thank you very much for Board of Selectmen. Hope you don't feel like you were coerced.
By you. We twisted his arm.
Albert Grant had some reservations about whether or not he could attend most of the meetings, and I kind of encouraged him to attend what he could. Bob Like from EDC had also volunteered, and Joe did when we brought it to planning and zoning, so I also took a look at the Charter, and of course, the Board of Selectmen, there's a provision in there about you may establish committees as you see fit. In this particular case, I don't think it's necessary, but it's certainly a prerogative to more or less formalize it by, through your creation.
So first of all, I would be remiss if I didn't take the opportunity to congratulate Clark on his recent appointment to a very prestigious position in state government, which, if confirmed, would mean that a lot of the staff work associated with the POCD implementation will fall to Ruth, which I think is actually fitting because revisiting this as an issue is something she actually brought to my attention a number of months ago and has really kind of run with. So Ruth, with the, I'm sure, clear understanding that you'd be responsible for doing a lot of the doing associated with this, certainly some of the organizational piece, does doing this on a more informal basis kind of comport with how you saw this going? You're muted.
Didn't want you to get my echo, or Clark's echo. If we become a formal appointed committee, then we have to go through the public notice process for our meetings and minutes, and, you know, it's more of an administrative-heavy process. And so I didn't envision that when I envisioned a working group. But if that's the way it is, we certainly are well-versed in doing that.
Well, you guys have looked into how other towns have done this and how we've done it in the past, and is this in keeping with that past practice?
I actually don't have information on whether or not the working groups are established that way. What I've seen is just the reports that have been provided to planning and zoning, like the update, progress updates on the POCD. Not really sure if that was a full-blown committee.
Clark, you had mentioned something about the past practice, right?
Yes, I had, and we had a long discussion about how other towns do it, Mike Tomato included, and I think we were all comfortable with the informal route, especially because somebody thinking that maybe agendas and minutes would be necessary, I guess I would say to them, there's no formal action that the Implementation Committee will be taking, no binding action. And in fact, the way it's set up with people coming from various boards and commissions, I view it more as a liaison opportunity for the people on the Implementation Committee to go back to the respective boards and commissions and have a discussion there during a public meeting, you know, properly warned recording of minutes and everything. So I think that we're on solid ground, although I'm certainly not a municipal attorney, but I think we're on solid ground because there's really no authority given to the Implementation Committee. It's more of an effort to figure out the right people or the right boards and commissions and what they may be asked to implement as their individual boards and commissions.
So Board members, do you guys have any questions or comments about, you know, the notion of doing this on an informal basis at a working group level?
Well, I guess I would agree. I mean, the reporting will be done to planning and zoning, right? So that kind of covers, you know, public recording of any activities or anything, and like Clark says, it's merely, it's really a group of people that are just reviewing the document and then prodding folks that have action items to get them done or to, you know, facilitate getting them done. I think that, and all that being reported to the Planning and Zoning Committee that takes care of the, you know, the public meeting stuff.
Everybody comfortable with that?
I'm fine with it.
I'm seeing head nods. Charlie?
Selectman Nordele, yeah, I'm comfortable with that. You know, like Clark and Alan said, you know, the real action's going to be taken by planning and zoning, and they're already established board or committee, so I think we're covered, and that's a smart way to go.
Okay, so that being said, I think that we have, or Clark and Ruth have identified some key people involved in boards and commissions or throughout the community that would be interested and willing to participate in the implementation. Thank you both for your leadership on this and, you know, bringing this forward so that it's something that we can hopefully complete. And I guess we'll look to that first meeting to see what the first item you're going to tackle is. There's got to be some low-hanging fruit, and I actually bet there's quite a few things that we've accomplished already without perhaps even realizing it. So thank you very much, both of you guys, for bringing this forward. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
You too.
Congratulations, Clark.
Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thanks.
We have six minutes. I think we just hang, honestly. I don't want to take up the other two items and have them interrupted by the 7:30 start time. So what I'd ask is a motion to stand in recess.
Selectman Muska will move that we stand in recess.
Is there a second?
Second.
Nathan seconded. Selectman Nordele.
Aye.
Selectman Baker? Selectman Baker?
Aye.
Selectman Muska?
Aye.
Selectman D'Souza?
Aye.
We're in recess at 7:24. It is 7:31. I'm going to call the town meeting to order. Our next item of business is the election of a moderator. Are there nominations?
Sarah Muska, 25 Maple Avenue. I nominate Jason Bowser as moderator.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Are there further nominations to come before the town meeting?
Oh, wait, who's seconded? Sorry, I was writing. I didn't look up.
Len Baker.
Alan, okay. Thank you.
Selectman Nordele will move that nominations be closed, or second that nominations be closed?
I think you're the maker, Charlie.
No, Alan made it.
Oh, I didn't hear him.
Yeah, I think I have a little sound delay and keep missing, sorry.
Motion has been made and seconded to close nominations. Any discussion on the motion? So because this is a town meeting, and we need to make sure that everybody is an eligible voter, what I'm going to do is I'm going to call the names that I see on the screen. If I don't have your last name, actually, you know what I'm going to do? I'm going to recognize everybody on the screen, ask you to give your first name, your last name, and your address, and then cast your vote. So the question is to close nominations. Selectman Nordele.
Selectman Charles Nordele, 7 Grandview Terrace, yes.
Selectman Baker?
Alan Baker, 340 Rice Street, yes.
Selectman Muska?
Sarah Muska, 25 Maple Avenue, yes.
Selectman D'Souza?
We'll read this, we'll attend Rice Road, Broadbrook, yes.
Mrs. Gaudreau?
Karen Gaudreau, 167 Depot Street, yes.
Mrs. Lassner?
Ruth Ann Lassner, 27 Laurel Circle, yes.
Mr. Lassner?
Tom Lassner, 27 Laurel Circle, yes.
Mr. Sauerhoffer?
Joseph Sauerhoffer, 6 Pierce Lane, yes.
Mr. Norton?
It's picking my address. Leonard Norton, 15 Barber Hill Road, yes.
Ms. Hoffman?
I knew you were doing it.
Margaret Hoffman, 28 Church Street, yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Paul Anderson, 89 Main Street, yes.
Mrs. Farmer?
Noreen Farmer, 247 Southwater Street, yes.
Les?
Les Sheldon, 8 Margaret Drive, Broadbrook.
Mr. Sheldon, would you care to vote on the question?
Not at this time.
Jennifer?
Jennifer Abbey, 32 Rice Road, yes.
Nominations have been closed. The motion is to nominate Jason Bowser as moderator. Selectman Nordele.
Yes.
Selectman Baker?
Yes.
Selectman Muska?
Yes.
Selectman D'Souza?
Yes.
Mrs. Gaudreau?
Yes.
Mrs. Lassner?
Yes.
Mr. Lassner?
Yes.
Mr. Sauerhoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Norton?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Hoffman? Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Farmer?
Yes.
Mr. Sheldon?
Yes.
Ms. Abbey?
Yes.
Okay. I'm going to ask the town clerk to read the town meeting public notice. Mrs. Lamb?
Okay. You guys can hear me, right?
Yep.
Warning, notice a special town meeting and referendum vote by voting machine, East Windsor, Connecticut. All electors and persons qualified to vote in town meetings of the town of East Windsor, Connecticut, the town are hereby warned and notified that the Board of Selectmen of the town are convening a special town meeting to be held via Zoom pursuant to the instructions set forth below at 7:30 PM on April 15, 2021, for the following purpose. Item 1, to consider and discuss the sum of 3.5 million from the town's unassigned general fund balance is hereby appropriated for the purpose of repaying a portion of the town's outstanding debt, including, but not limited to, the town's 2014 general obligation refunding bonds, the town's 2016 general obligation bonds, the town's 2019 general obligation bonds, the town's 2012 rural development loan, the town's 2015 rural development loan, and/or the town's outstanding capital leases. Collectively, the outstanding obligations, including the payment of principal, interest, and any call premium on such outstanding obligations as determined by the First Selectmen and the Treasurer-Finance Director to be in the best interest of the town and pay such additional costs and expenses related thereto as the First Selectmen and the Treasurer-Finance Director shall approve for the funding of necessary and appropriate costs, including, but not limited to, legal advisory, escrow fees, verification fees, investment fees, and administrative expenses. Item 2, to determine whether the polls shall be open from 6:00 AM until 8:00 PM to conduct the referendum reference in item number 1 above. All those persons qualified to vote in town meetings of the town are hereby further notified that pursuant to the Connecticut that pursuant to the Connecticut General Statutes and the Town Charter, the Board of Selectmen have removed the above item. One, on the call of this special town meeting for submission to the voters of the town who are qualified to vote at town meetings for yes or no vote by voting machine on the following questions. Shall the town of East Windsor, the town, appropriate three and a half million for the purpose of repaying the town's outstanding debt, including but not limited to all of, all or any portion of the town's two thousand fourteen general obligation refunding bonds, the town's two thousand sixteen general obligation bonds, the town's two thousand nineteen general obligation bonds, the town's two thousand twelve rural development loan, the town's two thousand fifteen rural development loan and/or the town's outstanding capital leases collectively, the outstanding obligations, and to pay such additional costs and expenses related thereto as the first selectman and the treasurer finance director shall approve, yes or no, dated at East Windsor, Connecticut, this eighth day of April, two thousand twenty-one.
Thank you, madam. I'm now going to read the eligibility to vote. This is from Connecticut General Statutes, chapter ninety, section seven dash six. At any town meeting other than a regular or special town election, or at any meeting of any fire, sewer or school district or any other municipal subdivision of any town incorporated by any special act, any person who is an elector of such town may vote. And any citizen of the United States of the age of eighteen years or more who jointly or severally is liable to the town, district or subdivision for taxes assessed against him or her on an assessment of not less than one thousand dollars on the last completed grand list of such town, district or subdivision, or who would be so liable if not entitled to an exemption under Connecticut General Statutes subdivision seventeen, nineteen, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-five or twenty-six of section twelve dash eighty-one may vote unless restricted by any provisions of any special act relating to such town, district or subdivision. I now ask whoever has resolution number one to please read the resolution.
I have number one, item one, to consider and discuss the sum of three million five hundred thousand from the town's unassigned general fund balance is hereby appropriated for the purpose of repaying a portion of the town's outstanding debt, including but not limited to the town's two thousand fourteen general obligation refunding bonds, the town's two thousand sixteen general obligation bonds, the town's two thousand nineteen general obligation bonds, the town's two thousand twelve rural development loan, the town's two thousand fifteen rural development loan and/or the town's outstanding capital leases collectively, the outstanding obligations, including the payment of principal interest and any call premium on such outstanding obligations as determined by the first selectman and the treasurer slash finance director to be in the best interest of the town and to pay such additional costs and expenses related thereto as the first selectman and the treasurer finance director shall approve for the funding of necessary and appropriate costs, including but not limited to legal advisory, escrow fees, verification fees, investment fees and administrative expenses. I move the foregoing resolution be adopted.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Motion has been made and seconded. That was Paul Anderson. Paul, remind me your address. Are you eighty-one Main Street?
Eighty-nine.
Eighty-nine Main Street. Uh, motion has been made and seconded. As per the call of this meeting, we're going to debate this question. We're, we'll discuss it. But the question itself will be removed from consideration tonight and included on the May eleventh budget referendum as a townwide question. So, um, before I open the floor to questions, I just want to kind of briefly explain what we're doing and why we're doing it. So the town has a long established, undesignated fund balance policy, which is effectively the town's rainy day fund. The policy says that we're supposed to be within ten and twenty percent of our general operating budget in that fund. We are in excess of the maximum capacity of that policy by about six and a half percent. So we are at about twenty-six percent of our operating budget in that fund when the policy says our maximum should not be more than twenty percent. So this is, it's been a, a common practice in the past to spend down the, the fund balance to get below that cap on certain projects. The recommendation from the Board of Selectmen and from the Board of Finance in this case is to take three and a half million dollars from that fund and pay down existing debt. So if you think of it in terms of, uh, you got a bonus from work or you got your stimulus check from, from the federal government, rather than spending that on other stuff, rather than buying a new car or, you know, remodeling the kitchen. What we're doing instead is we're paying off our credit card. What that will do is it will stop the town from incurring about three quarters of a million dollars in interest over the life of those existing loans. It will accelerate the time period by which we're able to bond for other necessary projects by a number of years. It will allow us to take that three million dollars in cash right now and turn that into substantially more in terms of available projects once they're prepaid and to do all of that without increasing the town's debt service budget. Um, so it, it, in my estimation is a win on a number of levels, but I wanted to just take what is a relatively complicated, complicatedly worded resolution and make sure it was clear what we're doing and why we're doing it. Um, are there any, any further discussion on that question? Any further discussion on that question? I'll ask one more time. Any further discussion on that question? Seeing none, uh, the question will be decided by a voter, by a vote of the voters of the town on May eleventh in concert with the annual budget referendum. Who has resolution number two? Selectman Norde, is that you?
Selectman Norde, seven Grandview Terrace. Item number two, to determine whether the polls shall be open from six o'clock AM until eight o'clock PM to conduct the referendum in item one above. I move the foregoing resolution be adopted.
Um, is there a second?
Sarah Muska, twenty-five Maple Avenue. Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Um, so just by way of explanation here, the general statutes require that budget referendum be conducted between the hours, require that they be conducted between the hours of twelve PM and eight PM. But it allows for municipalities to extend those hours to include normal voting hours, which are in Connecticut is six AM until eight PM. That needs to be done by an act of the legislative body, which is the town meeting. So we're asking the town meeting tonight to consider whether to extend the hours of that budget referendum to the full fourteen hours that it typically runs. Uh, any questions or discussion? Seeing none, the motion has been made and seconded. Um, I will call the roll. Selectman Norde?
Aye.
Selectman Baker?
Aye.
Selectman Muska?
Aye.
Selectman D'Souza?
Aye.
Mrs. Gudrow?
Aye.
Mrs. Lassner?
Aye.
Mr. Lassner?
Aye.
Mr. Sauerhopper?
Aye.
Mr. Norton?
Aye.
Mr. Severino? Mr. Severino votes aye. Ms. Hoffman?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Uh, Ms. Farmer?
Aye.
Ms. Abby?
Aye.
All those present and voting have cast their votes. Seeing no others, the motion clearly passes. The next item of business would be a motion to adjourn the town meeting.
I'll make that motion. Paul Anderson, eighty-nine Main Street.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, Selectman Norde?
That was Baker.
No, no, Selectman Norde, I'm calling your vote.
Aye.
Selectman Baker?
Aye.
Selectman Muska?
Aye.
Selectman D'Souza?
Aye.
Mrs. Gudrow?
Aye.
Mrs. Lassner?
Aye.
Mr. Lassner?
Aye.
Mr. Sauerhopper?
Aye.
Mr. Norton?
Aye.
Mr. Severino?
Aye.
Ms. Hoffman? Mr.? Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mrs. Farmer?
Yes.
Ms. Abby?
Aye.
We are adjourned at seven forty-seven. Thank you all very much for participating in this. I'm going to reconvene, where am I going to put this? The meeting of the Board of Selectmen. And we'll take up, uh, the regular call of the agenda, which is agenda item nine A. Discussion of local capital improvement funding proposals to include Mr. Norton and Mr. Sauerhopper. So we have a brief PowerPoint presentation. Cause I'm really enamored with those lately. Okay. So, um, the town every year gets an allocation from the state for LOSIP, which is the local capital improvement projects. The statutory authorization for LOSIP is CGS seven dash five thirty-five through seven dash five thirty-eight. And local capital improvement projects mean capital expenditures that are repairs incident to reconstruction and renovation, but not ordinary repairs and maintenance of, of an ongoing nature. So that means you can fix something big, but not something that needs to be generally maintained. The example being, um, you could replace the transmission in a, in a truck, but you can't change the oil. So qualifying, some of the qualifying LOSIP projects, um, include roadwork and sidewalks, public building renovation or energy conservation, bridges, dams and flood control, improvements to public parks, communication systems, public housing projects, P O C D revisions, hazard mitigation, establishment of bike ways or greenways, open space acquisition and technology upgrades. So I asked, um, Joe and Len to put some thought into what would be appropriate projects. Um, and we have a couple of ideas that we want to present to the board. So I'll turn that over to, um, Len and Joe. The, the town must certify that these projects are, are local capital projects. The, the projects are consistent with the town's, um, adopted capital improvement plan and that adequate funding is available because it's a reimbursement grant. So those are the criteria by which we need to, to move forward. So Len and Joe.
Could we, are, are you going to put up the PowerPoint? PowerPoint, please.
Is it not up again?
It's not up.
I hate this thing.
Well, blame it on the D I T guy. Go ahead.
How about now? Do you see it now?
Yep.
Yep.
Sort of. Wait a minute, I gotta move this. I'll get this out of the way.
There you go. Okay, the first project on the list is Napoleon Drive. There's the, some items listed up on the screen there. I'm going to run through, uh, some notes that, uh, the original subdivision approval was in two thousand and three. King's Court, which is a relatively short cul-de-sac was the first road that was constructed and that was completed and accepted by the town shortly thereafter, probably oh four or so. Napoleon Drive and Dempsey Road were then started sometime around between two thousand six, two thousand seven. The binder for both roads was completed in the winter or just about late fall, early winter of two thousand seven. Nothing has been done since around two thousand ten with respect to the road or the improvements. The binder has been in place now for over ten years, which, um, we've had this situation on another road in town. It's way too long for a road to sit in that condition. The, the pavement design is, is meant to have the top course on and a relatively, you know, if you can get away with a few, three years maybe, but so there, there's issues out there with the, uh, binder and what have you. So there somehow or another, and I don't know how it happened, but the bond for the subdivision improvements, I don't, I don't know what happened. I, I guess it, it never got renewed, what have you. And, and I'm not even sure when it expired, quite frankly, but, um, so we need to, going forward, we're going to have to go out and survey the road. We're going to take the responsibility out to complete it because we have residents out there that are complaining about certain items and they have a right to have the proper road. So we got to survey a road, find the existing conditions. We're going to have to check and adjust the road grades and the catch basin tops that are, that are already in place. Once we do that and, and regrade what we need to, we're going to complete the paving on the project and then we're going to have to prepare, uh, what we have for right-of-way maps and documents so we can get it approved by the town. It would be an accepted town road. We'll, once we're happy with it here at Public Works and Engineering, we will, we will relay that information onto, uh, the planning and zoning department, who will then recommend that the, uh, Board of Selectmen have a town meeting and accept the road. We're estimating that to be approximately a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Any questions?
We'll take questions at the end.
Okay. So what I, what, what we're asking for is thirty-three thousand seven hundred dollars to do a master plan for all our parks. Okay, a master plan is a living document that will help, help provide a community roadmap for improvements, setting goals and priorities of what we need with the community's involvement and vision for the future. This assessment, this, this master plan will help us assess all our parks, determine the cost and what improvements would be best served the community. Develop, develop goals in addition to helping us, helping us with our service and maybe expanding and doing other renovations for other recreational purposes. This is a, this is basically, it's a P O C D for the parks. It'll give us a great plan. It'll give us ideas and, and, and it's involved in the community to get all their input. I think this is the best way for us to go forth with all our parks. That way there, everybody knows what we're doing.
Okay, I'm up. Dog pound.
The dog is ugly.
The dog is sad.
Back in, uh, the spring of two thousand seventeen, we conducted a site visit with the state animal control officer who had been out there with the town's animal control officer and had some complaints and was very unhappy about the condition of, of the, of the pound. So upon our, you know, sometime after our, uh, site visit, I received the checklist of deficiencies that were necessary to bring the facility at the compliance. We came up with an initial estimate as to what it would take to, to improve the dog pound, to bring it up to, uh, current standards or as close as we could. The town, to my recollection, um, investigated regionalization twice. Uh, once was to, I think, work with Summers at one point. And then the most recent one was, uh, a couple of years ago, a year or two ago, to kind of, uh, move in with, uh, South Windsor over there on Solomon Avenue. The ideas were rejected by the town. So every year and I have, for years I sat on C I P and now I'm kind of a consultant to C I P or what have you. And, you know, the, this project comes up every year on C I P. And quite frankly, every year is probably one of the first items that gets cut from C I P. As much as we try very hard to put even a little money away for the, for this project, it's, uh, those of you familiar with the town and our budget and, uh, the condition of things, there, there's just never enough money to, to do something like this. There's far more pressing items. Um, many more urgent needs in town than, than bringing the dog pound to compliance. So we could use the funding to finally do this project and, and we have an updated estimate of about sixty-seven thousand dollars.
Okay, sidewalks. So one of my many hats that I wear here is I'm supposed to be currently in doing a sidewalk assessment for ADA compatibility and just all around safety. So as you all know, or you're all aware of, um, the sidewalks going down Main Street from Holcomb Terrace all the way up to Spring Village, just, just a little south of the Sports World Dome are in dire need of repair. They need to be upgraded. We have a lot of, well, you can see by the picture, we have a lot of, um, by two minutes, which is blacktop, where that we've patched over them to try to make them uh, more reasonable and, and more travelable. more reasonable and more travelable. They certainly need to be brought up to ADA compliance. And this twenty-nine thousand dollars along with the seventy-seven thousand we have in sidewalk and C N R and lieu of should give us a good, good chance to get. I'm hoping the whole project done, but it's really a work in progress out there because of the way the conditions are, the way the grades are. People put driveways in after the fact. We've got trees growing through them. So, but it'll give us a good jump where hopefully we can get it done in one phase or we may need to do it in two. Now, is there any questions?
Thank you, gentlemen. Any questions for members of the board? Sarah.
Selectman Muska, thank you very much for the presentation. I did have a lot of questions going into this agenda item, so I appreciate you thoroughly explaining each one. Just a question on the, the master plan for the park. Is, is that just thirty-three thousand seven hundred dollars for basically just a study of what potential things we can do there are? And how would that affect things that we are already doing there at this point?
So it's for all parks. And if you look in your packet in the very last page, it'll give you a timeframe and exactly a breakdown what the architects and the engineers will do for us. Hold on, I'll get my.
I don't think I have that in my packet.
So basically it's a lot of, there'll be community, there'll be meetings with the community to see what their input is. It's if you're familiar with the Route Five corridor study, it's basically the same thing. The engineers will come in, the architects and the engineers, and they're going to see, they're going to assess what we have. They're going to come up with some suggestions, but they're really going to focus on what the community really is looking for in the parks. And then basically just come up with a, a draft, drafted plan and then eventually a final plan. And then, then we have to appropriate the money to do the plans they come up with. So we want to look at every single park from, from the East Windsor Park to the Warehouse Point where the Memorial Park is. There's, there's a park in Prospect Hill, the park out in Windserville, every single park and assess them and come up with the best use for the community is going to be.
It's a community-based plan, similar to the way they constructed the plan of conservation and development a number of years ago. So there will be analyses and proposals and stakeholder engagements around what those proposals ought to entail. So it also gets us to a position where we have turnkey stuff that's ready to roll in the event that there's funding available. Strategically, it makes us utilize our resource to the highest and best use.
I guess I'm just concerned because we're, you know, we went ahead and pulled all those trees in the reservoir. We put a ban shell. We're doing things now. And then if we do this study and there's a different result that the community wants to see something else and then we might be obligated to change everything that we've been doing. So I guess that's just my concern with that. But I am glad to see this, the dog pound, that's something I would definitely support. Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Marie.
Yeah, I'm thought process in line with what Sarah had said about the recreation areas. We know that Reservoir Road is being renovated now. And there's some things that I may like to see happen there, but I don't know if it's current plan. And I would hate to have somebody come in and start looking at that before it's finished. The other thing is the Scott Hall soccer fields. We just recently put in all the bathrooms in over there. To me, that would be a waste to have them look at that. The other smaller locations, I have no problem, but I'm under the impression that we could save that thirty-three thousand dollars. We can utilize our own staff to review those and form a committee if we needed to or volunteers. But that's just my opinion. I have no problem with the dog, dog pound. I think it's overdue to get it done. Napoleon Drive, if there is indeed a bond issue and I don't want to discuss it here, I would ask that you take a look into that, make sure it doesn't happen in the future because it's not the only one that's ever happened in town and that's concerning. The thirty-three seven I just addressed the Main Street sidewalk. Joey, I think I got the numbers written down wrong. You said you had twenty, you said you had seventy-seven thousand dollars set aside already for that project?
Yep.
And you, and you would need another twenty-seven thousand? Did I hear that?
Well, what's left in the LoSiP money is twenty-nine thousand dollars, I believe.
Okay, but the total cost of that project is a hundred and thirty-one nine.
Correct. That's an estimate, Marie, and until we get going and do it.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, that's what it's going to cost if we send somebody out there to do it.
Okay.
Right now, I mean, you have to understand that there's already existing sidewalk there. So we pull it out, we may not have to put sub base in, we may not have to compact input process. We won't have to box it out. I'm assuming there, there's about eight trees. I'm assuming they have to come down now, so it's the worst case. So if they don't, they don't. Also, again, with the driveway aprons, we may be able to cut the grades down and do a little, a little more dirt work, which is less costly than putting driveway aprons in. So it's, you know, it's, 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 it's a, it's an estimate. It's an estimate of what we use to install new sidewalks.
Yeah. Yeah, and I don't have a problem, Joey, have all the faith and you guys and your numbers, but layperson looking at it, the numbers just didn't match. I just wanted to clarify that.
Well, also too is look in that total number you're looking at, that there's a, there's a contingency involved because I've learned my lesson a long time ago that I build contingencies in any estimates I give because sometimes we go a couple of years before we do the projects.
True.
So, you know, you'll see the same in the dog pound.
Yep.
And you'll see the same in Napoleon.
Yeah, I saw that. Okay, thank you.
So to follow up on a couple of points that, that Marie has raised, I'll start first with the sidewalk thing. We have an estimate that we expect would cover the total cost of the project. If the, the, if we don't have all of the funding to do all of the project, we do as much of it as we can and then we come back to it later. The Planning and Zoning Commission is required to charge at least forty percent of a fee in lieu of for sidewalks in circumstances where they don't require sidewalks to be installed. So that money replenishes. We also are in the process of encouraging them to not settle on just forty percent. So hopefully that that would recuperate a bit faster than it has. So we would do as many feet as we could do. If it's a thirteen-hundred foot process and a project and we have enough money to do a thousand feet, we do a thousand feet and then we come back to do the last three hundred when the money's available. Concerning the Napoleon Drive issue with the, the bond, there is an issue there. But you'll recall about a year ago, our board addressed that issue prospectively so that new developers are required to sign a developer's agreement inclusive of a bond as an annual review of the bond as determined by the town engineer. This is another one of those projects that we just are inheriting from about eleven years ago. I don't think this is the only one left with that particular jeopardy, but prospectively, that won't be a problem going forward. So I just wanted to touch on those two points. Any other questions or comments on the projects as presented?
Selectmen mobile, isn't that section of Main Street state-owned? Is that a state road? So couldn't we, couldn't we push the state to get rid of the trees?
No, the state will do nothing with respect to sidewalks. They won't install them. They won't maintain them.
Not the sidewalks, the trees themselves that are wrecking the sidewalks.
Well, I would say it's highly unlikely since they don't care if the sidewalks are there. That's just my opinion. We are going to need to get a permit, a DOT permit to construct the sidewalks in their right-of-way and they will give us a permit to do that. I doubt that just because they're popping up the sidewalks that they would cut the trees. I could check with the district office and ask, I'll make a note, but I think it's highly unlikely that they will do it.
Well, put it another way, if Alan and Charlie were to wander out there one night with a chainsaw and drop the tree across the road, who's going to clean that up?
Well, in that case, the DOT would clean it up.
If they answered the phone. If not, we would have to clean it up. And they tend not to answer the phone.
So hypothetically, Charlie, does that get to the question you were trying to get to?
Well, yes and no, but you know, maybe a few residential complaints as well about the trees might help push DOT to get out there and cut them down.
Well, I would, and again, this is just my opinion. And I've been dealing with the state for probably forty years in one way, shape or form. If residents were to complain to the state that the trees were popping up the sidewalks, the state would tell them to contact your local public works department because they're responsible for the sidewalks. Just saying.
Yeah, I'm thinking residents though could make other related complaints like, hey, the tree in my front yard is encroaching on my sewer system or limbs are falling on my house. Could you have that tree removed? You gotta be a little creative.
Okay, that might work.
Well, then they'll send the state arborist out and the arborist will tell us there's nothing wrong with the tree. And then just because we want to remove it to widen the sidewalk, they'll tell us no, and then we'll be with tri-pazards in the sidewalks that we have.
Well, you don't tell them.
Any other questions or comments on the LoSiP presentation?
I would just like to say that I think these are all great projects. And personally, as a former member, a member of Warehouse Point, a former resident of Warehouse Point, I, I, this is something that I've always noticed was needed to be done. And with all the projects, all the studies and all the stuff, every single time it rings up, fix your sidewalks, extend your sidewalks. And so this is getting, I think it's even in the P O C D. So I bet you we tick off something with the P, in the P O C D with this project and, and a lot of other things. So, and I think it's good for the residents. And of course, everything else, I think those are, those are all, I think, excellent ideas. And I, one thing I wanted to mention with the, the Parks Master Plan, you know, the, our trail, the A H R C trail. Now, they're not ever asking for money. The, they build those, build and maintain that on, you know, with their volunteer hours and everything. But I'm wondering if maybe if, when this master plan is done, if that trail should be included in it just so when there's grant opportunities for the trail, they can produce that document because I think that's often a missing item when we're looking for grant money to, you know, because there is plans to, you know, create, they're working on another trail, but to go further down the river and basically expand that to the other side of the river. So just an idea to maybe just include that trail since it is, since it is one of our best-used parks, just, just so they have that document for the future grant opportunities.
Well, I can tell you that, and again, Melissa, Melissa's on vacation and I am speaking for her, but I could tell you this, that my intentions and, and I tend to be able to sway her is every, basically get a list of every piece of property that the town owns and have them give us a good overview and like you say, okay, the trails. I mean, what about, what about the, the Schumi property? What about, I'm trying to think, the Coget property? We, we're in a situation, there's some trails going through the woods there. What, I mean, we have so much beautiful land that, you know, we could do a lot with. And, you know, I mean, yeah, we put a ban shell up because we didn't know COVID was coming and we wanted to have some concerts like the rest of the town. We took down some trees that were in dire need to come down because they were dying and turning into a hazard and potentially going to cause property damage to property we don't own. But it's a good start. We've got a good start, but we need a plan. We do not have the, the staff or, or the manpower to do it in-house to, I mean, we need a plan. It's, it, you know, it's, I think, to me, we're always being reactive. This would put us proactive. Give us a baseline. Give us an idea of what we can do. And because there's nobody on staff that's a landscape architect. There's, you know, there, there's nobody that really knows how to lay out and do it. And it, it would just, we would become proactive and be able to be eligible for money when it comes up and, and maybe build another soccer field or add another baseball field. You know, I mean, we have nice place, you know, we have a beautiful soccer complex. We have a beautiful baseball field. But they're, they need a lot of work. They need to be updated there. And these people would help us tell us what we should be doing rather than, you know, building another dugout when they say baseball's not in anymore. Everybody's playing lacrosse and you don't need, you know, you don't need dugouts or soccer is the big thing and, you know, you're better off building another soccer field than investing in a baseball field. These are the professionals. These are the people that do the studies. And I'm done. Sorry.
I agree. And when you have that fancy shiny study that has all the G I S stuff and everything, that's an excellent document to get you a little step further, you know, some points in a, in a grant application. One other thing, just to put it out there is one of the portions of the Warehouse Point study also showed a trail along the river that connects to the existing trail. You know, there's a, you know, the bridge that goes over, the Bissell Bridge. There's a pedestrian trail there that takes you into Hartford. That's almost completed. I've ridden it on my, on my bike. I mean, it's, it's paved from there all the way into Hartford. And that their, their plan is to bring that all the way up north here. And so, you know, having that kind of mapped out and figured out helps pull that together. And you know, that's, people talk about those rails to trails ideas, which also could be a park, a linear park. But you know, this is already a project that's seen a lot of investment by, in the state and federal level. And we could help ourselves by, you know, plugging into that. So, and that document, you need that document to get any of that done.
Right. Look at along the Connecticut River, the people that watch the Eagles. Well, on our side of the river, you got to trump through the woods. Why couldn't we think about that? I mean, go across the street or cross the river to Windsor Locks, the beautiful trails there. They're paved. You can take wheelchairs. You can, you know, I mean, we really need to invest just like we did with the P O C D. It's an investment.
Well, it's funny, you should reference the Windsor Locks Canal Trail because the first selectmen in Windsor Locks and the first selectmen in Suffield have invited the town of East Windsor over time to join in grant applications that they're submitting along those passive recreation grants. They're, they're trying to go, they're trying to make that a very long trail and they want us to be a part of it, crossing the bridge and coming along our side of the river right into South Windsor. And we don't have anything other than a G I S for that. So anyway, any other comments or questions on the proposals as presented?
I just want to thank, thank you to Joey for that explanation.
So if there are no other comments, we have about two hundred and sixty thousand dollars of LoSiP funding available. The four projects total just shy of two hundred and sixty thousand dollars. So the statute requires in circumstances where there is a town meeting form of government, the final approval on LoSiP projects is the Board of Selectmen. So we don't need to go to the Board of Finance. We don't need to go to a town meeting. The decision to commit those funds is left to this board per the terms of the LoSiP authorization. So what I'd like to do is try the board's mind on each of the projects on an individual basis. So the first project was, actually, I'll just pull up the sheet so everybody can see it. Because now I've learned that you don't share a screen too. You share the actual PowerPoint. So these are the, the dollar values for the three projects. Is there a motion to commit the hundred and thirty thousand dollars for road improvements along Napoleon Drive?
Make a motion to commit a hundred and thirty thousand dollars of LoSiP money to complete Napoleon Drive.
Is there a second?
Marie, this was, I will suck at that.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none. Selectmen Norde.
Aye.
Selectmen Baker.
Aye.
Selectmen Muska.
Aye.
Selectmen De Souza.
Aye.
Motion carries. Town Parks Master Plan. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the $33,700 for the Town Parks Master Plan.
Is there a second?
Will second that.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Charlie, I'm giving you a minute. I see you maybe have some.
No, I don't have any. I just don't know which way I want to go on this. I'm first.
I'll, I'll tell you what, I'll do you a sound. I'll call it backwards. If there's no other discussion, Selectmen De Souza.
Aye.
Selectmen Muska.
No.
Selectmen Baker.
Aye.
Selectmen Norde.
All right, I'll put in your hand, she's, no.
You broke up there. Please say that again.
No.
I'll break the tie and vote yes. On the Dog Pound. Is there a motion?
Selectmen Norde will move to commit $67,000 to the Dog Pound.
Is there a second?
Selectmen Muska will second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Selectmen Norde.
Aye.
Selectmen Baker.
Aye.
Selectmen Muska.
Aye.
Selectmen De Souza.
Aye.
Motion passes. On Warehouse Point Sidewalk Replacement.
Make a motion to commit $29,000 to the Warehouse Point Sidewalk Replacement for LoSIP Funds.
Selectmen Norde will second that.
It's highly appropriate that Alan makes that motion. Any further discussion? Selectmen Norde.
Aye.
Selectmen Baker.
Aye.
Selectmen Muska.
Aye.
Selectmen De Souza.
Aye.
Clearly passes. Okay. That concludes our discussion on 9A. Len and Joe, thank you very much for putting that together and for joining us tonight. Next, we did 9B, so now we'll go on to 9C.
It was our pleasure, by the way. Thank you very much.
You did a good job, guys.
Well, and we will take the credit for the PowerPoint, but Jay did it.
It was collaborative. Moving on to 9C, Discussion of the American Rescue Plan Request for Quote Results. So you'll recall at our last meeting, the board authorized me to submit an RFQ for the implementation of a stimulus grant for small businesses and nonprofits in the community. I did that, although in reviewing the policy, I'm not sure that we needed to do it, but I'm glad we did just because it, you know, there's a degree of transparency and surety that we're complying with the policies. So the first, we had two bidders. There was my, my recommended one, which is Mr. Kripta. And there was a company out of Virginia called E M Partners. When I opened the bid, the, the, Mr. Kripta was the lowest responsible bidder at $120 per hour. The other respondent had to come by, you know, if they committed all of the staff that I identified for the hours associated with it, they would have charged $570 an hour. So the Mr. Kripta was clearly the lowest responsible bidder. The policy also says that there should be a consideration for a local bidder option. Mr. Kripta is located in Middle Hattam, whereas E M Partners is based out of Virginia. Our policy doesn't define what local is, but applying a common sense definition, Middle Hattam is closer than Virginia. So the next part of the policy says recommendation for contract award. Recommendations for award are stated by the department head. So in this case, I'm stating that I recommend Mr. Kripta as the lowest and closest responsible bidder to receive the RFQ. So that leaves the Board of Selectmen review and action. Said action may involve either an acceptance or rejection of the bid in question as recommended by the department head. So in order to award the bid, the Board of Selectmen needs to either affirm or reject the department head's recommendation. I shared the response from Mr. Kripta with all of you. So if you've all had a chance to review it, entertain any questions or ask for a motion.
I'll make it, I'll make a motion to appoint George E. Kripta from Middle Hampton, Connecticut, as the acceptance on the RFQ that was submitted and by recommendation, recommendation by Jason Bowser.
Is there a second?
Selectmen Muska will second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. Selectmen Norde.
Aye.
Selectmen Baker.
Aye.
Selectmen Muska.
Aye.
Selectmen De Souza.
Aye.
I'll notify Mr. Kripta that he's been awarded the RFQ. And either at our May 6th or May 20th meeting, I'm going to ask him to join us and start talking about how he sees this developing and incorporate views and opinions of the board so we can move forward in a timely fashion. Sound like a plan?
Good.
Okay. Tax refunds.
Selectmen Norde, go ahead, sir. I stepped over you the last time, so.
Selectmen Muska will move, move to approve the tax refunds totaling $277.55.
Selectmen Norde will second that.
Any discussion? Seeing none. Selectmen Norde.
Aye.
Selectmen Baker.
Aye.
Selectmen Muska.
Aye.
Selectmen De Souza.
Aye.
So carried. Okay. I have a brief report tonight. That's not the right one, though. So I want to start off by noting something rather tragic. We lost three young people with ties to our community to drug-related fatalities over the last couple of weeks. This is obviously a serious problem, but it's not unique to our community. So I just want to say that our hearts break for those we've lost and for their families. I've spoken with the Chief of Police and asked him to have a presentation outlining the, the circumstances in the community as they see it. And kind of a pathway forward to the extent that there is a one community solution. I don't really think that there is, but I've invited the Chief of Police to come speak with us at our next meeting and he's accepted. I want to note that the Broadbrook Fire Department celebrated their 125th anniversary last week. That is a lot of years of dedicated service to the community. I know that they are in process of planning a number of commemorative events for later this year, which I know many are looking forward to. Please join me in congratulating and thanking the Broadbrook Fire Department on 125 years of service. On April 7th, the Board of Finance finalized the budget that'll be presented to the voters on May 11th. The town's budget is an increase of 1.18% and a mill rate decrease of 0.22 mills. Voters will also see a question on the referendum ballot asking about an added appropriation that was discussed at tonight's town meeting. By approving this, we'll forego incurring $750,000 in interest over the life of those loans, accelerate our bonding schedule by a number of years and increase our bond capacity, all without increasing the town's debt service. We continue to hold COVID vaccine clinics whenever possible and we'll be doing another clinic tomorrow. We still had some slots available as of the start of tonight's meeting, but I think we're actually going to scale back the doses that we have because we've had a difficult time filling those slots. Anybody who would like an appointment or to be added to our waiting list can call Community Services at 623-2430. As always, we're offering Moderna and anyone who's 18 years or older is eligible to sign up. The reason we offer Moderna and not Pfizer or Johnson &amp; Johnson is because Moderna can be kept cool, but it doesn't have to be kept at a deep freeze like Pfizer does. And up till recently, Johnson &amp; Johnson has not been made available. It's, Moderna has been what we're able to get. Now that Johnson &amp; Johnson is kind of put on pause, I'm hoping that there's an uptick in demand for Moderna. A couple of, a couple of statistics I want to throw at you that I included in my townwide call last night that I think are, are of note. Any residents in the community over 75 years of age, 88% of them have had their first dose of COVID vaccine. And residents between 65 and 74, 95% of them have had their first dose. Community-wide, we're at a little bit more than 37%, but that's inclusive of people who are under 18 years of age and therefore aren't eligible to get it. So that, that number skews a little bit lower. But nonetheless, the under 65 demographic has a ways to go still before we get to that magic number for herd immunity. And so I'm encouraging folks to get their vaccine as soon as they're able to. The Energy Assistant Program administered by the town in conjunction with the state of Connecticut has been extended. Under the, the new deadlines, the last day to order fuel through that program will be May 20th and the last day to apply for assistance is June 15th. For more information on that, you can call our Community Services Office. Saturday, the Ad Commission is going to be hosting a horse-drawn plowing demonstration at the community garden. This is a great family-friendly way of supporting the commission and our community garden and our local agricultural community and of enjoying the outdoors. Last I looked, it looked like Saturday was going to be a great day. So I'm certainly looking forward to bringing my son to see what that looks like. I think that's going to be a blast. I also want to remind folks that the East Windsor High School National Honor Society is doing a bottle and can drive this Saturday from 9:00 to 12:00. That'll support our Power Pack program and the Five Corner Cupboard. So I'm encouraging anybody who's able to, to please stop by and drop off redeemables at the high school between 9:00 and 12:00 on Saturday. Lastly, I want to congratulate Randy Reikley on her ascension to Board of Education Chair. She moves into the role after now former Chair Kathy Simonelli moved out of town. Many thanks to Kathy for her many years of service and my sincere best wishes to Randy as she leads our school district forward. I'm going to be happy to work with her in any way that I can. That's all I have and I would recognize, Marie.
Yeah, as you're aware, I was on vacation since our last meeting. The Economic Development Commission that was held on the 6th, because I was out of state, I did not sign in on that. But it's my understanding that they're going to be doing the Eat Out East Windsor. Program's going to run from May 15th to 30th. And basically, like somebody did last year where you go out and dine locally and you submit your receipts and then they'll have a drawing at some point. And it's my understanding that they're also looking for donations from local establishments. So we'll see what happens there. The Board of Finance meeting that I normally would have sat on, I also didn't sit on that, but I did speak to someone to bring me up to date. If it was anything that I should have been made aware of while I was gone. The Broadbrook Fire Department, and again, I wasn't on vacation then, but I did listen in last night to a planning and zoning meeting. Yes, that 40% for the sidewalk money set aside was brought up at the meeting also, but I'm sure when Baker as the liaison will discuss that. Other than that, I don't have anything.
Selectmen Baker.
Yeah, so planning and zoning is real busy again. I think they had one meeting where they got sort of a break, but they had a bunch of public hearings this week. And they actually approved two new businesses. One's a barber shop, which is, it's a kind of a, kind of a new, new, modern type of barber shop, not like the barber shop you think of. And that's on North Road in the Bastel Plaza. And they also approved a, a new construction company building. It's going to be multi-tenant, which is on, in the industrial park on Newberry Road. So that's good. And they have a number of new public hearings that are, that are kind of working their way through the process. The one that is notable is the S J K Properties Text Amendment. They have come back from the request that they had a few meetings ago. That was not well received by the public and they've tightened up their language and, and making another go of it. And in this one, they're just doing the text amendment now and waiting to do a zone change request if they're successful with this. So that was continued, although it seems like the majority of the mission was, was in favor of it. But we'll see how they go. Now, as far as Marie was saying, yeah, it is typical. You know, there's a subdivision, whenever there's a subdivision, they either have to build sidewalks or provide a fee in lieu of that, and they ask for that waiver when they are doing their, when they're, when they're getting their site plan approval. So there's a subdivision on Rockville Road where it doesn't make any sense to, to have a sidewalk because there's no sidewalks on Rockville Road. So they will be paying the fee in lieu of, and as far as the percentage goes or anything, you know, I don't think they really discussed that. Um, that's all I have for you.
Sir?
Okay, on April 5th, I attended the Warehouse Point Board of Fire Commissioners' public hearing and regular commission meeting. Construction began on the new addition to Station 1 about two and a half weeks ago. All supplies are in and the project is moving on schedule. Chief James Barton has reviewed and approved the drawings for the new fire apparatus, which should be completed around October or November of this year. There were 48 fire calls and the Fire Marshal's Office conducted 26 inspections within the Warehouse Point Fire District in the month of March. The Warehouse Point Fire District will hold a public vote on their fiscal year 2021, 2022 budget on Monday, April 19th at 7:00 PM at Station 1, 89 Bridge Street in Warehouse Point. I did attend that Board of Finance Final Budget Workshop on April 7th, which Jason already commented on. I do want to say though, that I was a little caught off guard that $100,000 was added back into the budget on Public Works for long-term planning for possible infrastructure projects. Although I am open to such projects, I was disappointed that this idea bypassed the Board of Selectmen and was not in the budget proposal that we received, nor did we have a chance to weigh in on this thought. April 8th, I attended the Veterans Commission Meeting. Chairman Jim Barton informed the commission that he finished putting together 55 street flags that the Public Works Department will put up around town prior to Memorial Day. The Memorial Day Parade, followed by the cookout at the American Legion Post 40, will definitely be a go this year. It will kick off at 10:00 AM on Memorial Day, Monday, May 31st, from the Town Hall Annex. Invitations will be sent out to marchers soon. But if you or your organization would like to take part, please contact Chairman Jim Barton at 860-202-3454. Or you can also email him at djbarton422@gmail.com. The commission will make a decision by August 1st on whether they will hold their Veterans Day Road Race this year. Last night, the Board of Education met via Zoom. Outstanding students and Crystal Apple Award recipients for the third quarter were announced and recognized by each school principal. Samantha Charette from East Windsor Parks and Recreation announced Kendall Boulay and Chevy Kohler as the winners of the Limerick Contest from their respective age groups. The board received a curriculum report from two teachers, offering two very important courses to juniors and seniors. Honors, American Literature and Math for Everyday Life. Mr. Scott Shelton, instructor of Math for Everyday Life, which introduces students to financial concept, excuse me, concepts that will apply to everyday life, such as budgeting, insurance, checking and savings account, and taxes. Reported that 100% of the students that took that class in the first semester received a passing grade on their final exam. Randy Reikley, previous Vice Chair, is now Chairman due to the recent resignation of Board Member Kathy Simonelli. Kathy was elected to the Board of Education in 2009 and has served as Chairman since 2015. I have had the honor of knowing Kathy and have had the privilege of calling her a friend for several years. I would like to thank Kathy for her countless years of dedication and service to our community in various capacities, some of which include the Capital Improvement Planning Committee, the East Windsor High School Booster Club, and of course, the Board of Education. I wish Kathy the very best. The board elected Heather Spencer as Vice Chairman. Congratulations to Heather in her new role. Beginning April 26th, students will be back in the building five days a week. Those that wish to stay fully remote are still able to do so at this time. And the school does have a policy in effect for mandatory 14-day quarantine for those students and staff who travel that are not fully vaccinated. And that's all that I have.
Thank you. Charlie?
Okay. On, I missed this quarter's Connecticut Water Company's meeting because I had Warehouse Point Fire Commission on the same night. On 4/14, I attended the Police Commissioners' meeting. The Police Department has bought their two new vehicles for this year. This year, they bought The Police Department has bought their two new vehicles for this year. This year, they bought the Ford SUV, police vehicles. A request was made to them by the owner of Skylake Airport for having signs put on Wells Road that say low-flying aircraft, so that will go for study and approval. The Charlie Museum will be hosting many spring events, including concerts, a beer and wine tasting, a craft and vendor fair. You can see their Facebook or website for more information and dates on those events. They also have been very busy working with the Electrical Union with getting poles replaced along the tracks. I would also like to remind Warehouse Point residents, like Sarah mentioned earlier, that on Monday, April 19th, Warehouse Point Fire Department will be holding their budget vote for fiscal year 21-22. Voting will take place at 7:00 PM at Station 1 with all COVID restrictions and guidelines in place. Please feel free to use the bank and church parking lot because parking's very limited there due to the construction. And that is all I have.
Thank you, sir. Any public participation?
Yes. Charlie Norde, Seven Grandview Terrace. I too would like to address my concerns for the order in which things were presented. We had $100,000 presented to the Board of Finance before going through this group. And that's not something that procedurally should be done. And if we want to be transparent with the public, we should do things in the right order. Maybe if time was a constraint, then maybe hold a special meeting of the Board of Selectmen. But I would like to be transparent with the voters and make sure that we present things in the proper order.
Any other public participation? Maybe a member of the public?
Jason Noreen Farmer.
Hi, Noreen.
47 Southwater Street. I actually want to thank you for doing the, all of you for agreeing to the park study. I was actually planning to come on tonight, start you about parks. I just bought a small cabin way up in the woods of Maine, like almost at the Canadian border, and it's a little tiny town of 800 people. And and we were there this weekend and I brought my three-year-old granddaughter with me and we went tooling around to find what's in this little town of ours now. And we found the absolutely most wonderful playground and we went in and it was just like, oh my goodness. And it made me sad because a little town of 900 people can manage to have this wonderful playground for their children. And we don't because we don't plan for it. But now that hopefully this will be a good plan for our parks and I just, I'm glad you decided to do it. And I also hope that the plan, once it comes forward, that it comes to fruition at some point. I think a lot of times we tend to do things and we get plans, but then we don't do anything with the plans. Or we say, well, we can't afford to do anything with the plan. And, and, you know, if we're going to commit money into doing plans, be it parks, community centers, whatever it is, there's, I'm hoping there's a commitment to actually try to accomplish it in some timeframe. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other members of the public wish to address the board? Seeing none, we will have an executive session. So I would ask that the, that we make a motion to go into executive session subject to 1-206B.
Selectman Norde, so moved.
Is there a second?
Marie De Souza will second it.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Selectman Norde.
Aye.
Selectman Baker.
Aye.
Selectman De Souza.
Aye.
Selectman Muska.
Aye.
We are in executive session at 8:41 PM. Peg, there will be no further votes this evening. So you have a great night and I'll get this hosted just as soon as I can.